Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting of September 9, 2019. I'm Ron Collins, Acting Mayor tonight, as Mark Olbert is not feeling well. We are going to proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance, and that is going to be led by Boy Scout Troop Number 321. Gentlemen?
Are we all joining in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda tonight?
Nothing from staff this evening. Mr. Vice Mayor?
All right. Mr. City Attorney, is there any report from our closed session?
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to start with some presentations. We have some proclamations for three members of Boy Scout Troop 321. I would assume that Eric Anderson, Michael Dascarolas, and Anthony Frangos are sitting in front of me. Hello, gentlemen. I'm going to come around. There are some proclamations for you, and we're going to make a presentation, and then, if you all had some projects, which I believe you did, maybe you could tell us a little bit about them. The audience wants to see you and take your picture, so. Okay, all right. The first is for Eric Anderson in recognition of achieving the Eagle Scout Award. I used to say that I got five merit badges short of becoming Eagle Scout, so I am always in deep awe of any Boy Scout member that goes all the way. Anyway, I'd like to present this to you. This is a recognition from the city of your Eagle Scout Award. And the next is Michael Dascarolas. Michael, there you are. And finally, Anthony Frangos. All right. Congratulations to you guys. Who would like to start with their project? Eric, you want to? All right, you want to tell us a little bit about what you did?
Hi, I'm Eric Anderson, and I made some book boxes for some of the parks in San Carlos for the Parks and Rec Department. I started by scheduling a meeting with some of the people in the Parks, the Rec Department, and they gave me some parks that they needed book boxes in, so I went and set them up.
Next.
Hello, I'm Michael Dascarolas. I built a bench at my church, Church of the Holy Cross in Belmont. I made it out of redwood lumber, two-by-fours predominantly, and about 15 people working on it, and we spent about 110, I think, hours on it, and a bunch of redesigns, but it's now at the church, and I made it because I do a lot of youth activities there, and there is this one spot by the parking lot where there's no seating other than the stairs. I don't think people like to sit on the stairs, so I built the bench after getting approval from the priest.
That's very nice. How much do you charge to put one in my backyard? Anthony?
Hello, I'm Anthony Frangos. My project was replacing around 100 of the no dumping markers on the curbs, the streets in San Carlos, and I examined around 400 of them, and yeah.
Why don't you just tell us a little bit about how old you are and where you go to school?
So, I'm 18, and I'm in six days going to be a freshman at Cal Poly, so.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm a senior at Sequoia High School, and I'm 17.
I'm 18, and I'm a freshman at College of San Mateo.
One of my many alma maters, so. Thank you all. All right.
All right, Ron, while you're coming up, I'm just going to say something to keep it going. As an Eagle Scout myself, I just wanted to offer my congratulations, and I've been in your shoes. I know what it's like to get there, and also thank your parents and family for the support that makes it happen as well, and keep up the good work. Stay involved in the community. It's an important thing that you've learned, and congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you have homework to do or packing. Right. Okay, next, we're going to have a presentation on updates from the Parks and Rec Foundation. From our own Amy Newby.
City Vice Mayor Collins, and council members and members of the community. Amy Newby, Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like to introduce Richard Armanino from our Parks and Recreation Foundation. Richard has been a board member for over eight years now and is on his fifth year serving as our president, and he is going to go over some of the highlights of what they've done this past year.
Welcome, Richard.
Thank you, and good evening. So, I'll first explain who we are and what we do for the city of San Carlos. The Park and Rec Foundation of San Carlos is a registered 501(c)(3), formed in 2007. Our board is comprised of 11 members, and we're always seeking more volunteers. The Park and Rec Foundation was established to be the primary mechanism by which community members could donate to San Carlos parks. We raise capital funds for improvements to San Carlos parks in conjunction with the San Carlos Parks and Rec Department, and to date, the Park and Rec Foundation of San Carlos has raised over $1 million through community donation drives, business partnerships, and Fundraising, we have ongoing sales of park amenities, which include benches, trees, play equipment, which raises approximately $10,000 a year. We have ongoing sales of artistic tiles that adorn Burton and Highlands Parks. That brings in about $2,000 a year, and we have an annual bocce ball tournament, which this year we just completed our fifth, and we average about $8,000 a year in fundraising for that event. Some noteworthy projects. In 2008, the Park and Rec Foundation raised $450,000 for the Burton Park Phase 1, which was the playgrounds and the water feature. In 2014, Burton Park Phase 2, we raised a quarter of a million dollars for the bocce ball courts, the stage, basketball courts. In 2018, we donated $50,000 to the Highlands Park Playground and Restroom remodel. 2015 and '16, we donated $25,000 for the sports field improvements at Highlands Stadium and Park. That included landings for the soccer goals, redoing the backstops for the baseball fields, new padding, et cetera. We've brought in new water fountains throughout San Carlos parks. So far, it's been about $1,000. We started that in 2016. We purchased the, or donated $20,000 toward the shade structures for the bocce ball courts, and we've annually donated $6,000 to $10,000 for scholarships for summer activities or Rec Department activities for those in the community. In the community, we support several of our events, which include the Conscience in the Park, which this year we had a total of eight from six that we had in prior years. It was very successful. The Goblin Walk, Night of Holiday Lights, Family Campout, the Block Party, which was last Sunday, and Week of the Family. We also donate, like I mentioned earlier, $6,000 to $10,000 annually for those in the community that need assistance for programs in the Park and Rec Department, which in 2020, the city will match those funds. Our goals for 2020 are to identify new capital improvement projects, which we work with Amy and her team. We want to grow our board membership, deepen our community relationships, improve partnerships with local developers and larger companies, have more aggressive quarterly outreach programs and campaigns, and begin the process of establishing a formal endowment fund. In closing, I just want to thank again Amy Newby and her team, our board members, many of which are here tonight, including Cameron, who's been on the board since 2007, and for the dedication and work that they do for our community. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from the Dais?
I have a quick comment.
Sure.
Thank you for that presentation, and thanks for all of you who help out and support our community, and also thank you for your support of the Block Party yesterday. I thought it was a great success, and thank you for helping to make that first one a big hit, and we hope to do more of them. So, thank you.
I also have a quick comment. I wanted to thank you guys as well. I'm a former board member of the Parks and Rec Foundation, and I can attest that they are a really fun bunch, and, you know, really pour their hearts and souls into making our community a better place and raising private funds to improve our playgrounds and our restroom facilities, and especially the scholarship funds that go to kids and adults in need who would like to participate but don't have the funds available. So, wonderful work in our community. I really want to thank you guys for your time and efforts, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. We miss you. Take care.
Laura? Okay. Thank you, Richard. Yeah, I have a friend that lives in Redwood City and is visiting or using the bocce ball court. She's in a league, and they play every year, so. All right, thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the San Mateo County Home for All Initiative, and I think that's Pat Brown? All right, come on up, Pat. Just as Pat's coming up, I'll let you know. I was a member of the Home for All Committee. Laura's on it now, and Pat's been moderating all the meetings for the last, what, four years or so, and she does a great job, so. Pat?
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, members of the council, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to just give you a little bit of information about Home for All. Home for All is an initiative that was started by San Mateo County in 2015, so we've been going almost five years now, and it was started because of the recognition of the growing and continuing to grow gap between the number of jobs that were being created in San Mateo County and the number of housing units that were being created, and that gap was pretty alarming. When we started, we identified a 25-to-1 gap, jobs to housing. It was started with the task force being called together by the county that represented all of the cities in the county, educators, health providers, developers, a broad cross-section of San Mateo County that was being affected by this jobs-housing gap, and the task force was asked to identify the factors that were contributing to this growing gap and to think together about some solutions that might address some of those factors. Instead of compiling a report at the end of the eight months of deliberation, the task force decided that they wanted to promote some action on this issue, so they established Home for All and provided a charge for Home for All, which was to serve as a convener and a motivator and an educator in the county, bringing people together to see how to promote more housing at all levels in San Mateo County. Home for All is not an advocacy organization. It does not take positions on any particular projects, but works with, primarily with the cities, who are the decision-makers, for the most part, about housing being developed, but with developers and with other stakeholders, and really looking at the kind of the factors that are key to housing development: funding, land, policies, and community will, community engagement, and those are what was the task force identified as things that contributed. And I guess I should be moving my... So, here was the jobs-housing gap information as we started. I'm happy to report that not only through Home for All, but as a county, we are making progress, and where the gap in 2010 to '14 was 24-to-1, it is now, in 2010 to '17, 12-to-1. Still a big gap, but progress is underway. And then, this is what I was just talking about, the factors that the task force asked Home for All to deal with: housing funding, housing policies, identifying land, and looking at ways to involve a broader cross-section of the community in decisions that related to housing. So, one of the things that I've been proud to be working on and feel honored to be working on is something called the Community Engagement Program in San Mateo County, and one of the things that we've worked, bless you, that we've been working with cities on for the last two years, is helping them to identify, in their community, those that are already active when housing questions come up, and those whose voices have been missing from the conversation. And in 2018, we had an RFP process where we identified four cities that wanted to sponsor community engagement efforts, working with Home for All, and those cities, Burlingame, Redwood City, Hapun Bay, and Portola Valley, each launched an initiative in their community to do just what I said: identify how they could provide information to their community, involve more people, solicit input, and provide information back, and develop ongoing communication mechanisms so that as housing questions came up, they were able to access community involvement and community opinion. In 2019, we've worked with Brisbane, Pacifica, and San Mateo during the first half of this year, and during the second half and going into 2020, we'll be working with Hillsborough, Foster City, and hopefully with San Carlos, if you approve that opportunity. The work that we do with you involves a collaborative effort. It is, we provide a small grant to offset the cost of actually doing the community engagement work, but it is a very big, has a very big impact on staff and leadership in the community in terms of the work that takes place in identifying who you would like to have involved in the housing conversation in the community. So, I'm here tonight to let you know about that. If you decide to go ahead with becoming part of the Home for All family, which would bring us up to 10 cities out of the 20 in San Mateo County, I would be the lead contact for the Home for All team that would be working with you. There would be probably a team of four or five of us from Home for All. We work with the consultant group that are experts in community engagement. The name of that group is Common Knowledge. They're based in Marin County, and we've been working with them from the beginning, and then a team from San Carlos, so that would be the makeup if you are inclined to move ahead with us. So, I'm available to answer any questions, otherwise I just appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Pat. As I recall, Jeff Dewey, we've got an agenda item coming up in the future meeting to approve a community engagement meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you'd like to hear a little bit more of the sort of initial staff plan and timeline moving this forward, we can ask our housing manager to come up and give you just a brief update as to how we're proceeding. We had our first initial meeting two weeks ago, I think, with Home for All, so we're beginning to put that together.
Could be Martin? Martin, you want to just come up and give us a couple of notes on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Great presentation.
Good evening. So, we, just to give a little bit of history, we initially released an RFP where we tried to get community engagement services to help facilitate a similar community conversation, but we recently discovered that we could become a part of the Home for All process when there was some capacity that was available, and so we met with the City Council Housing Subcommittee to discuss whether that was an option we wanted to take, and we have since moved forward with the recommendation to follow in that direction and have retracted the RFP and informed the consultants that responded to that RFP to let them know that we're going to move forward with the Home for All process. So, at this point, we have scheduled an initial kickoff meeting with that Subcommittee and the members of San Carlos team, Home for All team with the county, and the Common Knowledge Consultant team to begin that process and start setting up what will be the agenda and the next steps for the next few months to start getting forward with the community engagement program.
Okay, great. Any questions for Martin?
I have a quick question. So, Martin, thank you. You'd mentioned that some capacity had opened up with Homes for All. Could you describe that a little bit? Because my understanding was initially they weren't available, and what was the trigger that changed that?
Sure. So, typically, the application is, the application is sent out a few months before the Home for All team accepts new cities that want to partake in the program. When the city contacted Home for All to be able to join as a partner city, we were notified that the applications would be available September, but that was when we reached out in May of this year. So, rather than waiting until September to become an eligible city in the subsequent year, the city opted to take the alternate route of sending out an RFP to find similar kind of programs that would, that would help to have the same type of community engagement program develop. However, well, as a part of that, we thought that it would be great to have the Home for All team join us on the review panel for the RFP responses that we received, as their insight would be very useful for us, and to join the interview panel. And when we invited them to review these three proposals that we'd received, we found out that Hillsborough and Foster City had opted to wait a few months due to other local issues that had taken precedent, and so they had some capacity to accept a new city, at which point we came to the Subcommittee to make sure that that was the route that they'd like to take, and that was the decision that was made.
And we're really glad that they decided to delay it, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Martin. All right. Okay, next item is public item, or public item, I apologize, public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on matters that are not on our post agenda may do so. Every, each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals wishing to speak during public comment, the chair may draw five speaker cards from those submitted to speak during this time, and the balance of the public comment speakers will be called upon at the end of the meeting. If the item you are speaking on is not on the agenda, please be advised that the City Council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. City Council's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have the matter placed on a future City Council agenda for more comprehensive action or report and formal public discussion and input at that time. I don't believe I have any speaker cards for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak who has not filled out a card? Okay, well, seeing none, we will move on to council communications and announcements. These are council members' reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, and committees that they serve on. All of us serve on a number of these organizations, so. Anybody want to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I have one thing to share. Just recently, we had our second meeting of our joint two-plus-two City Council School Board meeting, and it was me and Adam, and two school board members, and Jeff and the superintendent, and we had a good public turnout as well, and we covered some topics including field use, after-school, and preschool childcare, which was a very valuable discussion, I think, for both sides, and workforce housing. So, we're going to meet again in November, and those agendas and minutes are posted on the, through the eNotify service, if anybody would like to go back and stay up to date on those meetings.
Thank you. Laura? Okay. Adam? All right. I'll just briefly report, I had a couple of meetings last week. I serve on the, as a member of the Samtrans Board and also the Caltrain Board, and the obvious topic that has dominated the discussion lately is electrification. It is proceeding. There have been some newspaper articles about delays. The installation of the poles, some of you may have seen these big poles going up and down the tracks. It's a, it's a rather flexible schedule. Sometimes they're ahead of schedule, sometimes they're behind, but they are making good progress, and I'll leave it at that. We will next move on to our consent calendar. These are items that we usually don't address unless someone wants to pull something from the consent calendar. Is there any item that any member of the council wants to pull or a member of the public? I'll ask- I'll ask the public in just a second. Let me just ask the council. All right. Hearing none and none from staff. And no member of the public appearing not to want to pull an item. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through D.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Crystal, is this a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. You want to call the roll?
Councilmember Parmalohin?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is what we now call Agenda Setting. These are items that are not yet on an agenda. Various members of the public or the council or the staff can request that things be put on to be considered for a future item on an agenda. So the first one is consideration of agendizing a review of construction errors and recommend potential changes tasked to the Planning and Transportation and Circulation Commissions with reviewing San Carlos' allowed hours of construction and rules regarding restricting street accessibility during construction to determine current best practices. And consider recommending changes relevant to local regulations and policies. At this point, thank you, Adam, for pointing that out. We do have some speaker cards. We like to take public comment before we discuss it among ourselves. So I do have three speaker cards. We actually have one on 9A. I have one on, two on 9B. So the one I have on 9A is Jeff Grace. Hello, Jeff.
Good evening. Good to be here.
Hang on just a second while I bring my little timer to life. You know, you have two minutes.
Do I have that reputation?
What's that?
Do I have that reputation?
No. We just, we just give everybody two minutes. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, City Council and Acting Mayor Collins. Jeff Grace, a 40-year resident of San Carlos. I've watched San Carlos go from a very sleepy little town to a very vibrant town. And it's been very exciting over the last 40 years. I pretty much have the feeling this, items on the agenda is a result of an email I sent to all of you and Jeff Malphey earlier this year, a couple of months or so ago, regarding construction hours. And I thank you, a couple of you responded. Thank you for getting back to me. I don't mean to be hypocritical, but I've been in here a number of times speaking on behalf of some pretty significant projects, construction projects in San Carlos, including the Transit Village, Palo Alto Medical Clinic, and a number of other large projects in favor of construction and continuing to grow our city. But I am finally in construction overload. As I said in my email, if there's such a thing as construction PTSD, I think I have it now. It's just, it's been ongoing. For the past 10 years, the house in back of me was demolished and new house was built. The house across the street from me was demolished and two new houses were built up the street. A couple of houses, the house was demolished and a new house was built. Currently, the house next door to me was virtually demolished in February and is being built. And the house across the street from me just sold, and it sold including plans for demolishing it and putting a new house in. So you probably get a feeling that I've caught, reached my limit with the construction. And it's going on all over San Carlos. And it's, it's good, but the noise and the traffic have become extremely irritating. And I'll see if I can make this work. I'm going to play a brief annoying thing. See if, of course, it's not working because I didn't turn my volume on. It's coming through. I don't know if it's coming through the speaker or not. You get, you get the idea. So when that goes on for six, seven days a week, virtually all day long, comes Saturday, it's just, I've just had it. I mean, it's enough, the noise and whatever. And San Carlos code permits construction seven days a week, including Saturday and Sunday. And it really becomes a bit much. And I think it's time to take a look at the days and number of hours permitted.
If you could move to wrap it up?
Yeah, we'll wrap it up. So what, there was a question regarding a trade-off of, you know, reducing the number of days, and that extends the life of a project. Originally, I was like, yeah, like, get the project done sooner. Now I'm like, it needs some peace and quiet, like a couple of days a week. There's another comment I did have regarding traffic, which I'd be glad to bring back later.
Okay.
I live on a rundle road, half a block from the school. Traffic backups on the school. Really need to take a look at what you'll allow during 8:30 and 2:30 in the afternoon for deliveries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Well, I don't know who's, who asked for this to be considered. Any fellow councilmembers' comments on this or feelings?
Mark may have brought it up. He's not here, so.
Any thoughts, Adam?
I guess, I'm wondering, since Mark's the one who brought this up, whether we should maybe move this to another meeting to have him take a, sort of advocate for it. But I don't know what the process is in that. Or, I mean, I'm happy to have, maybe have it something we'd look at the, at our planning retreat to look at as a potential item when we have that coming up next month or so.
I'd ask for some direction here in terms of, you know, if indeed it was Mark that asked for it to be put on, is this something that we should defer to another meeting for, to talk about?
I believe it was our Chair, Olbert, who asked to have this put on. Certainly, the council could simply delay, and we could put this on the next agenda if you'd like. Or you could talk about whether or not you want to direct staff to place this on an upcoming agenda. As Councilmember Rack pointed out, oftentimes, council will ask to have this, these types of things added to their list for discussion at their mini-retreat so that they can kind of weigh them in context of other potential new initiatives that they'd be looking at in the coming year for staff to work on. So any of those approaches would be, would be welcome.
Okay.
Well, to build on Adam's idea, I think we talked about also too, the commissions are going to be doing mini-retreats, if I'm not mistaken. Would this be a potential area for them to explore given their subject matter expertise?
We could certainly ask them to, although I think the original ask from the council when it came to commission mini-retreats was you wanted to hear what their ideas were rather than. But should you proceed with this down the road, it would definitely be something I think you would task a commission with taking a look at.
Any thoughts, Sarah?
I'm fine with saving it for our strategic retreat. I'm also happy to task it over to the Transportation and Circulation Commission to take a first stab at it.
Yeah, I think it's an important item. I just, we have so many things that we're working on and that the work plan for the city is quite extensive. But it's not something I think we should ignore. But I do agree that it is a good topic for our strategic planning retreat. And then we can, we can do it then.
I'll add it to the list for your mini-retreat. We'll put that on the agenda, so it will be an agendized item.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on to 9B, consideration of agendizing a discussion on implementing reach codes for all electrification and new constructions. I do have two speaker cards for this. First is Deborah Hurnas. Come on up, Deborah. And next, followed by Suzanne Emerson.
Hello, City Council members. My name is Deborah Hurnas. I've been a residential owner in San Carlos since 1987. First of all, thank you for your recent passing of the resolution in support of a bill currently in the House of Representatives calling for a price on carbon. Now we have another chance to act at a local level. I encourage you to pass reach codes in San Carlos to raise the building standards beyond the state-issued codes. We do need to take action on climate change now. And the reach codes for electrification reduce our emissions, reduce new building costs, and lead to safer and healthier homes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Deborah. Next is Suzanne Emerson.
Good evenings, Suzanne Emerson of San Carlos. In San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, there are 26 different cities that are considering energy reach codes. Those were developed in collaboration with County of San Mateo's Department of Sustainability along with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and Peninsula Clean Energy. I understand that broader around the Bay Area, there's about 50 communities that are looking at energy reach codes. Here in San Carlos, according to the San Carlos 2015 Climate Action Plan Update, 22% of our community's greenhouse gas emissions are from a category that is referred to as residential energy. On average, 80% of the energy used in a home has, comes from the heating of the house and the heating of the water for the house. The studies that they've done on the reach code show that greenhouse gas emissions for an all-electric new home would be 53% lower than what they would be for a mixed-fuel new home. And that's only in the first year. As our electricity providers continue to aim towards 100% renewable electricity, the statistics on how much greenhouse gas emissions are avoided would actually get better over time. The draft that the consortium came together with would require that homes that have mixed fuels meet a higher energy efficiency target while all-electric homes would just meet the state's minimum. A cost-effectiveness study shows that the average new construction of a single-family home going all-electric would actually cost about $5,000 less than a mixed-fuel home. That's mostly because of the saved cost from having to install the natural gas lines and the meter and connecting in with natural gas. Also, they calculate that the actual operational costs are lower for all-electric than they are for mixed-fuels homes. If you really want to be environmental leaders, you could even go beyond this and do what's being done in Morgan Hill, Menlo Park, and Berkeley, where they're saying new homes don't get to use natural gas for water heating and space heating at all. They're banning it as opposed to just trying to incentivize it. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, does any, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay. Well, comments?
Yeah, so I, in response to public comment from last council meeting, I asked that we consider this for a future agenda. I think where my mind is at the moment, there's, I'm hearing different sides of the coin around the cost-benefit of this. And so that's the part that I'm kind of wondering about, would it be worth, while exploring the discussion around evaluating the cost-benefit of implementing a reach code and what would that look like for our city versus not doing so? So that's kind of where I'm at at the moment.
Okay. Sarah, did you want to add anything to that?
I, I agree with Laura.
Okay. Adam?
So, and I think this is a great, I appreciate all the comments and emails we got for this. I think it's an important topic. I guess for me, I'd like to, I'd like to learn more about it. So I, for me, either a first step, I'd love to sort of get a presentation, maybe from Sustainable San Mateo and from Peninsula Clean Energy, and then sort of be able to understand a little more about it and then be more prepared for discussion. So I'd sort of like to do that as a first step and then talk about getting it on the agenda after we can get those presentations. I know some of you have done, are part of the Peninsula Clean Energy. You've been sort of living it and breathing it more than I have, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair to start the conversation there if folks are willing to have that dialogue. I think that would be great.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is an important item, and it's going to take, take some time and work and staff time. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Peninsula Clean Energy was, I don't know if they were the originator, but they were one of the organizations that's proposing it.
Yeah, they have designed a model ordinance. But again, I mean, it's a complex issue. I know that we're all concerned about climate. We passed the Climate Action Plan recently. So I know it's something we all care about. But it is a, it can, I think it's just a little bit confusing. And I think it would be good to bring it out into the light and try to understand really what's being asked and what the implications are for our community in light of the fact that we know that the state is going to be updating their codes and not too short order. And I think we don't know exactly what's going to be in those either. So I think it would be worthy of discussion.
I would agree. I know very little about this. So Jeff, can we have the PCE people come? And can we ask them to come and give us a presentation before we?
Absolutely. We'll contact Sustainable San Mateo County and Peninsula Clean Energy and take a look at our upcoming agendas and see what date works best for everybody. And we'll get that scheduled for you.
All right. That sounds like a good first step. Okay. Thank you. So moving on to 9C, which is consideration of agendizing and discussion for incentivizing childcare establishments in San Carlos. I don't have any speaker cards on this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Comments?
Well, I, this is one of my suggestions. I know that the Childcare Subcommittee recently met, so I don't know if we can discuss updates from that. But if there is an opportunity to bring more, a more thorough review of our childcare regulations to, to the forefront for us to discuss, especially if there's some low-hanging fruit that we could accomplish in the near term, I think it would be really valuable.
Since I'm on the Childcare Subcommittee, we did have a first meeting. I think there's probably some, some things we can bring forward at this point. I think that with, meeting with staff and others, there was some, some low-hanging fruit that we can have a discussion on and offer some options to the council. So I'd be in favor of placing it on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree. It's, we would be getting a report, I guess, on this from staff or how it would work?
Yeah, that's correct. Based on past council discussion and direction, this has been a priority issue of the council over the past year, one at which at the beginning of the year, we said we were going to get a few other council initiatives off the ground first before we started to focus energy on this, which we've done recently. So we're prepared and have been working on this for a while. And, you know, with the, with the council's support tonight, we'd be prepared to bring forward a study session-type agenda item for the council in the, in the coming weeks.
Laura?
Yeah, I was, I would agree. My understanding is in recent years, childcare costs have risen upwards of 40%, if not more, for families. And anything we can do to evaluate increasing access to childcare, I think, is a good thing.
All right, well, I think that makes it unanimous then. Great. Okay. Moving on to public hearing, this is consideration of holding a public hearing in accordance with the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement in approving issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, to finance a 24-unit affordable rental housing facility for the benefit of Walnut Street LP and/or related entity at 817 Walnut Street, assessors parcel numbers 050-163190, and certain other matters relating thereto. And Martin, thank you. You're here, ready to go.
Good evening, members of the City Council. So we are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is located and the governing body approve the proposed financing. Charities Housing Development Corporation of Santa Clara County, Charities Housing, is the borrower, and they propose to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $15 million. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the cost of new construction improvement and equipping of a 24-unit rental housing facility for low-income tenants to be located at the parcel that comprises 817 Walnut Street plus approximately 10,000 square feet of the adjoining parcel, which is currently used as a public surface parking lot, all located within the city limits. The California Municipal Finance Authority, the CMFA, is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, Charities Housing, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the City Council adopt this resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. The resolution would also authorize the council chair or any designee thereof to execute the joint exercise of powers agreement with the CMFA. We have both Kathy Robinson of Charities Housing and Ben Barker, the financial advisor to the CMFA, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Well, before we do that, this is a public hearing, so I don't have any speaker cards. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, so I think since I opened it, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Do we need a voice vote or roll call? Pardon me?
It could be a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, questions? Of staff. Laura?
Yeah, so Martin, can you talk a little bit about who, who is going to be responsible for issuing the bonds and all that kind of stuff? Is that a city task or is that the task of the partner agency?
I'll have Ben Barker, financial advisor to CMFA, to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Barker, California Municipal Finance Authority. The resolution states that the CMFA, the California Municipal Finance Authority, will be the sole responsibility and the issuer of the bonds. The reason this is done this way is the city, it alleviates the city from having any responsibility of any new debt or repayment or anything to the bonds. So the city is acting purely as a public hearing agency today, tonight. They're holding a public forum for us, and that's the entire role of the city in this part of the financing.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Well, no questions, no comments from the public. I think unless there's anything else, I think we probably could have a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-71. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving, authorizing, and directing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement relating to the California Municipal Finance Authority and approving the issuance of revenue bonds by authority to finance a 24-unit affordable rental housing facility for the benefit of Walnut Street LP or related entity at 817 Walnut Street, APN 050-163-190, and certain other matters relating thereto.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, Crystal?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Moving on to new business. 11A, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting a memorandum of understanding, an MOU between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856, Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees, and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters, Teamsters Unit for the period of September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2021. Rebecca?
Good evening, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of an MOU for the Teamsters Unit. This group is comprised of 19 positions, including maintenance workers, senior maintenance workers, and our mechanic. Their existing MOU expired on August 31st of this year. The city's negotiating team and the Teamsters met 11 times, beginning from April through September, to reach agreement on the proposed MOU before you. A summary of the major components of the agreement are outlined here. It's a two-year term ending August 31st, 2021. The salary adjustments for all classifications in the unit will be a 3% increase in the first year and a 2.5% increase in the second year. The union membership language was updated to be fully compliant with recent law changes. We increased the cap for the second callbacks more than once during the initial three-hour callback period from $3,000 to $4,000. We've added qualified applicator pay, where designated positions will receive $50 per month to obtain and maintain a qualified applicator certificate. California state law requires that those that apply or supervise the application of federally restricted pesticides possess a valid certificate. We've added a Class A commercial driver's license pay, where designated positions will receive $1,000 per year. We've added a California Water Environment Association pay, CWA pay, where designated positions will receive $50 per month to obtain and maintain a CWA certificate. And finally, the city and the union agreed to a side letter where the definition of for the calculation of overtime has been updated to include time in a paid status but not worked. So they'll now receive overtime for, their time work will now include vacation holidays, jury duty toward the calculation of overtime. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We don't have any speaker cards on this issue. Any member of the public wishing to address the council? Okay, questions? No questions, all right. Well, thank you, Rebecca. We don't have any questions. All right, no questions, so comments from the public, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-72. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the City of San Carlos and the American Local 856, Freight Checkers, Clerical Employees, and Helpers Union International Brotherhood of Teamsters Unit for the period of September 1st, 2019 through August 31st, 2021.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Crystal, would you like to call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to item 11B, consideration of approving updates to the city's strategic plan, work plan items. Hello, Tara?
Good evening, Council. Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Before you this evening, we have the strategic plan update. This is the strategic plan that council approved in March of this year, and we thought it was prudent at this time to provide some detailed updates about the status. So just really briefly, I'd like to just go through some of the elements of the strategic plan. That includes the mission and the vision. And the City of San Carlos provides high-quality services and facilities in a sustainable, responsive, and friendly manner to foster a safe and healthy community now and into the future. And the vision is to continue to move with confidence into the future as a desirable, vibrant, inclusive, and business-friendly community admired by all, is a great place to live, learn, work, and play. The core values that council established are listed here. These are not in any prior order at all. Fiscal responsibility and sustainability, protecting cities' assets, infrastructure, resources, strategic thinking and planning for the future, high ethical and professional standards, high-quality customer service, protecting our environment, a safe, diverse, welcoming, and engaged community, and supporting the well-being and development of city employees. Strategic goals that the council established, these are in priority order, they, you guys, council, I should refer to you as, set three for this year. The first is housing, and that is to actively encourage and support the creation of housing to provide a safe, diverse, and affordable supply by facilitating development of housing for all income levels. The second goal is transportation and mobility. We will actively pursue plans and strategic mobility and parking improvements while encouraging alternative modes of transportation to improve, to improve efficient, safe, and effective movement throughout the city. And finally, downtown, to create a vision to enhance, improve, and protect downtown and a framework for achieving this vision. So under housing, there were four objectives set. I will give those details in a moment. Each one had a set of tasks assigned to them. So that was housing. And then we have transportation and mobility. We have four objectives here and a number of tasks, which I'll go into detail in a moment. And finally, downtown, we have one objective and one, one task under that. So this is the detailed structure. I won't go into every detail here because we could be long, and I don't want to do that to you since we're on a roll this evening. So to keep it going, I'll just give you some of the highlights. So already, you've heard about the Home for All, so that was one of our goals, to get into that program, and we were successful. And then we are going to be coordinating some outreach efforts with Heart. And I'm going to call up Martin, if he's still here, just to tell us a little bit about this process and what we are doing with Heart.
Good evening again. Heart, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County, is an excellent organization that provides a lot of assistance. And one of the great programs that they have is the First Time Home Buyer Program. And what's really neat about this program is that they help to target the missing middle, that what we call of people who aren't quite below market rate and in need of housing but are also not sufficiently high earners to be able to afford a home in San Mateo County. So just to give you a snapshot of what this program does is you can qualify for a first, a first mortgage from Mary West Mortgage, their nonprofit arm, and then partner, it gets partnered with a Heart loan for a second mortgage loan so that you can essentially purchase a home of up to $908,000 with only putting 5% down, and it doesn't have any PMI. And so effectively, what that does is it makes mortgage payments much more affordable than if you were to take out a conventional mortgage. So we have worked with Heart to have a workshop here in San Carlos, tentatively scheduled for October 30th at 6:00 PM in the San Carlos Library. We're working with the Heart team to put together some marketing material and to start advertising this and getting as many people from the community to come to learn about the program and start seeing who may be able to qualify, get pre-qualified for this. And then they can help partner with different brokers in the area and help them find places. So this would be either for single-family homes within the county, not a lot of them under, for $908,000, but it also is for condominiums. Once again, this is for market rate, so below-market-rate units would not count, and there would be no resale restrictions on any property that would be purchased. So we'll be working with them, and as soon as we secure those dates, we'll be able to share those details with the council and the community.
Thank you, Martin. So that wraps up Objective 1, which is engaging the community. Objective 2 is to facilitate completion of projects currently underway. And as you can see here, there's a lot of projects. A couple of them are underway and some are scheduled for 2020 and 2021. You, you've heard about the Walnut Street, Walnut Street project, the Cherry Street project. These are all familiar with council. We're also looking toward the Alameda de los Polgus project, as well as Vista del Grande, and then some large office development projects. And these will be ongoing. We'll be looking at how we can incorporate BMR, below-market-rate housing, into these Housing objective 3 is to increase the number of below-market-rate housing units to meet local and regional housing requirements. And again, without going into too much detail, those are the tasks that we're going to undertake to try to increase BMR in San Carlos. We'll update the ordinance and work towards developing partnerships, just to do what we can to improve these numbers going forward. And the last housing objective is to study land use and other regulatory options to increase all types of housing. And we'll be evaluating development standards to incentivize housing in areas already allowed. We've already started work on this, and if you take a look all the way down to item 10, it'll take us till about 2023 to finish all of these tasks that we have. So we're working, but some take longer than others. And then, under the same objective, we have update the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and we've started working on it, and we hope to get that to council in January. Next is the transportation and mobility goal. We have Objective 1, which is to identify non-vehicular mobility opportunities and challenges citywide. And one of the tasks is to complete the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I'm going to ask Stephen Machida, our Public Works Director, to come up and just talk a moment for the, about the process and also the opportunity for council to participate in these upcoming outreach meetings.
So as part of the, oh, excuse me, Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. As part of bicycle master plan, one of the things that we wanted to do was actually contact some of the stakeholders that we had last spoke with in, during the whole process. But we wanted to do it in a little bit more intimate style. So what we were planning to do is meet with the San Carlos School District, San Carlos Bikes, the EDAC, or Economic Development Advisory Commission, the Chairman of Commerce, SAM Trans, Cal Train, and the airport. And basically, we want to have a little kind of more intimate group, just so that they could voice their, their, their comments and get any additional feedback. Then ultimately, we wanted to hold a much larger community outreach meeting where everyone would essentially be invited to kind of share, provide any comments, any kind of new directions that they really want to have. And that way, you know, we're feeling that if by having the more intimate group and then a larger group meeting, at least then, we would capture all the comments and really give a little bit more credence to the whole process that we're going through.
All right. Does there more? Wait, there's more.
Oh, yeah, you gave us a lot to do. But I think Laura--
I'm sorry, Laura had a quick question.
Thank you, Stephen, for that, for that update. So the connection between Redwood City and San Carlos.
Yes.
So that, I've gotten some comments from the public about that. And is there going to be any, when you talk about these subgroups, is there any consideration given to connecting with that? Whoever the people are on the Redwood City side that are working on the biking plans over there, because they've made some improvements. So, but there's some, there's some pinch points between, you know, here and there as the kids are trying to get to high school and stuff like that are problematic or causing some concerns.
So part of the things that we asked the consultant to do who's preparing the master plan is actually to look at that connection, not only to Redwood City but also to Belmont. Basically, we wanted kind of the throughput, just make sure that, you know, San Carlos is part of that. I believe you're referring to the Peninsula Bike Way is--
Well, it's, I don't know if it's part of that or not, but it's around that area where the kids are trying to cross into Redwood City, and there's some problem areas. So I can forward to you the emails that I've received that provide the more detailed description of the issue.
That would be perfect, be great. I think, you know, one of the things that we did ask our consultant is, you know, we wanted that consideration. I know there were, there had been several comments that we received during the kind of the public input process about making that connection from San Carlos to, to the high school, so.
Okay, any other questions so far before we move on?
Great. Okay, so continuing, we will be looking at implementing some of the projects that we identify once we've completed the bike and pedestrian master plan. And then we will be also doing some work to communicate with some of the other agencies in the area to improve safe routes to school. So that kind of answers the question about how we'll incorporate that into this project. And finally, we'll assess non-vehicular mobility needs as a result of the downtown study session, but that will be, to be, to be determined in terms, in terms of the timeframe. And under transportation and mobility, we have Objective 2, which is to identify citywide vehicular circulation challenges, including parking. So we're going to be doing a number of things. We'll be looking at the South Laurel area. We'll be looking at establishing a policy for the residential parking permit program. We'll be updating the vehicle miles traveled for SEQA. We'll do a general plan traffic impact, impact analysis, and then explore transportation demand management. We also are exploring some new parking opportunities. One of them is the potential for use of the surface parking lot at Cherry and El Camino for public use in the evenings and weekends. And there's some concern about safety of pedestrians crossing in that area, and Stephen's here to answer that question as well.
So we're currently working with SAM Trans in regards to utilizing the, the SAM Trans or Cal Train lot right adjacent to the depot. We're, we're in that, that discussion. I guess there really is some maintenance issues between SAM Trans and the city. You know, essentially, basically, they're allowing us to use the parking after 6 o'clock on weekdays and then pretty much all days, Saturdays and Sundays. However, there is some issues with who owns and who's going to maintain the lots throughout the year. So there, there is some still negotiation that we have to kind of clarify before we actually could start implementing or utilizing their parking after hours. And then in the crossing, you know, as-- And then in the crossing, you know, as councils were, we had installed a new signal at Cherry and El Camino. That light is unfortunately one of the signals, although it's our signal, a traffic signal. However, Caltrans still operates that signal itself. The timing, excuse me. And so, you know, that kind of controls the amount of green time that goes on to El Camino Real. However, they do have pedestrian heads that allows people to cross. So you push the button, you cross. I know there has been some complaints in regards to those ped heads not really functioning properly, or perhaps not being timed correctly. We've asked Cal, or we asked our traffic signal consultant to kind of double-check that, to make sure that there's enough, or there's ample time enough for someone to cross all of El Camino Real from one side to the other, to make sure it's safe. And then, you know, there's some other opportunities I'm exploring with my staff to see how we can actually time perhaps changing the ped head a little bit differently. Something where we might be able to give the pedestrians a little bit head start. And essentially, what we do is hold all the traffic lanes, and then give the pedestrians a little head start so that there's not that conflict, or at least there's more opportunity for the peds to be seen by the cars as compared to having everybody go all at once.
Okay, moving on to Objective Three, under transportation and mobility. We're almost done. We have a couple of things. The first is to review and update the transportation impact fee. We understand there was a question related to our process, as well as what's happening in South San Francisco. So Stephen, if you'd step up and tell us about that one.
Thank you, Tara. So I had the opportunity, unfortunately, I was not able to meet with or speak with anybody from South San Francisco. However, I was able to speak to the consultant who actually prepared the report. Currently, South San Francisco is using, I mean, very similar to what we do, is they collect traffic impact fees. However, they haven't really been able to collect a large enough fee to actually fund all their projects. So one of the recommendations of the report, or their Mobility 2020, is actually to form a community district facility, community facilities district, that would allow them to identify a certain zone, so they could create a boundary and basically collect fee, collect a fee from this area to actually fund a lot of the major improvements, transportation improvements within that zone. But this is not only related to streets, but it could also include bicycle, you know, pedestrian pathways, some transportation, bus, other type of transportations, rather than, or rather than just, you know, a vehicle or lane mile. So this is certainly an opportunity. They're currently in the process right now. They're kind of going out and exploring, doing the public outreach, kind of making that determination. Where they're really focusing this, CFD, is really on the east side of 101, basically where they have all of their new development, where Gen N Tech is. And so they're in the process. They haven't really garnered a lot of the support that they anticipate, but they, you know, they anticipate that this will be something that will be acceptable to the area, or to the area that's going to be charged the fee, such that they could address a lot of the transportation issues. How, currently, as I mentioned earlier, South San Francisco, you know, they charge a similar impact fee the way we kind of do. Basically, we look at the trips. Basically, it applies to kind of new development, as well as any redevelopment that requires a permit. But basically, if we look at the new trips that the development is going to create, and then multiply it by the estimated fee that currently the city council has adopted, and it's 300, oh, excuse me, $3,000, a little over $3,000 per trip. And so that's how we actually calculate it here. However, we've noticed that, you know, we're probably only collect about 13% of the total project that we would need, or that we need to fund for our traffic impact projects. So maybe I didn't really explain that carefully, but basically, our traffic impact fee looks at projects that we need to fund. And based on the projects that we anticipate are coming online, we charge based on what we anticipate the number of trips, the change in the number of trips are going to be generated, and where you're hoping, based on that, those number of trips, to charge those fees. Unfortunately, it's really kind of rare, so we don't always see the traffic impact fee right up front. So it does take, you know, many, many years to collect the fee. In the meantime, a lot of those projects that we actually see or identify, you know, they're continuing to cost more and more just because of inflation, materials, and construction costs. So we never quite really get up to where we really need to. And I think that's where a lot of cities are kind of experiencing the traffic impact fee. It just really doesn't kind of catch us up to where we really need to be. So that's one of the reasons I believe South San Francisco is looking towards using the community facilities district.
Sorry. Any questions for Steve on that? All right.
All right. We're almost there. I keep promising. All right, the next one is work with current and future developers and employers to fund roadway, last mile, pedestrian, and other infrastructure improvements. A council member had a question about last mile, and we have Al here to answer that question, to try to describe what the last mile is.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of the city council. So the last mile is when you're going to go to work, and you get to, you take the train or some other mass transit, and then you get to that point, but you need to get to your office. And a lot of times, what we're finding is that the getting from the train or from mass transit to your office is not as easy as some people think. It's hard to take your bike on the train. Sometimes the sidewalks that you use might not be hospitable, and, or it might be difficult to navigate all the things that you need to going through a certain part of the city, or an industrial zone, for instance. So that's what the issue is with the last mile. And the idea of the last mile is how do we make better connections from mass transit to those employment centers? And what we've seen in the Peninsula and the Bay Area is with the new development, is that cities are trying to tell the, and work with those employers to say, okay, if you're going to bring these employees, you have to help the city build the infrastructure to make that last mile a better, better for mobility to get people to and from, and from back to the train, too. So the employers care about it, the developers care about it, and the cities care about it, too. Thank you.
Any questions for Al?
I have two questions on this chart. Are you, are you, are you moving on from this chart, or are we still on?
We can stay on this page.
Okay, I have two questions on this page.
You know what, just as a procedural matter, what we might, if you've got questions, you're saving up, which I am. I'm just kind of saving them for-
We're going to pass them back. Okay, great.
And we'll kind of come back, but if you've got anything specific you want to address right now, that's fine.
I can, I can wait.
Okay.
We can come back to this at the end.
Okay. This page is to facilitate, Objective Four, is to facilitate completion of projects that are currently underway. And listed here, we include Holly Street, US 101 interchange, which is a big project. The construction contract will get let in November of this year. Construction should be complete by June of 2022. There's been some delay because of the, what do you call that lane? HOV lane? The express lane? The express lane that they're doing. The Four Corners Traffic Safety, we're working on that. Belmont is taking the lead and has awarded the design contract, so that's going to move forward. Once we have more information from Belmont, we'll have an idea of when design and construction will be taking place. Traffic striping and marking is an annual project. Britton Avenue widening, that project is currently on hold. And then these other projects will be completed in 2020. The last page is our downtown item, and we have one objective, which is to hold a study session with council to identify current tools, plans, protections, infrastructure, et cetera, and where improvements are desired. So there's one, which is to gather the data and information in order to present this to council and the community at a study session. We've done the request for funding, but there's a lot to be done. We are going to do a subcommittee meeting with council by December of this year, and then a lot of these other tasks will be determined as to when their schedule will take place, once we have had that meeting. Questions?
Any members of the public like to speak? I don't have any speaker cards, so if anybody wants to speak, they can come up, fill out a card. And I'm not seeing any, so I'm sure we probably have some questions from the dais. Sarah, you want to start it off?
Sure, thank you, Ron. I have a question about the traffic striping and marking, which I guess is a Stephen question. I know that we've been a little delayed due to staffing issues, and I just wanted to get an update on striping, specifically at Industrial and Holly, and some other pinch points in town that are in need.
So we're actually getting, you know, obtaining quotes, or contract to do quotes for the traffic striping and marking. Although we haven't really got the contractors yet, we still anticipate going out this year to actually do that work on Holly Industrial, amongst other kind of high area that are critical.
Great, thank you. And I had one other question. Just, could you give a little more detail about the Holly 101 interchange being delayed, and a little more color to that issue, please? Thank you.
Excuse me. So as you're probably aware, the Holly 101 Street has been a project that has been on the books for quite some time, and we have been working diligently to move forward, to move the project forward. However, earlier, you know, earlier probably this year, we actually had heard the timing of the express lane project. So this is, the express lane is essentially, essentially a managed lane, or what they call the, where you use your fast track. And basically, it's going to extend from Santa Clara County to Highway 380. Unfortunately, in the first phase or the first block is currently underway, just north of Palo Alto. However, the next phase that they're going to, they're contemplating on moving forward is essentially the same reach that Holly 101 exists. So what that means is Caltrans, the Caltrans contractor and the Holly Street contractor would be at the same location at the same time. It's virtually pretty much impossible to have both contractors at the same time. So we're looking at, you know, various alternatives. And one of the things we were hoping that, because we were ready to go, we're actually in advertisement, that we could move forward, and then perhaps have Express Lane perhaps do a different phase. And that's one of the things that we had talked to them about. Their Caltrans is not really, really willing to do that. They would like to keep the contract moving from south to north. And so, you know, as a result of looking at delay costs for the express lane project versus some of the delay costs for Holly 101, you know, they felt that Holly 101 delaying it a little bit would be a little bit cheaper. And so that's one of the things that we're negotiating. We're still a little concerned, because we are going to, if we do delay it, you know, that would be our cost, something that we would have to absorb. So basically, we would expect Caltrans to make us whole. And so we're kind of in negotiations with that, discussions with them. Fortunately, the TA, you know, they're kind of the project that helps fund both projects. So they're kind of fighting for both, but making sure that, you know, we behave and making sure that the project moves forward correctly. And so, as I mentioned, there might be some silver lining in this, in the sense that basically, if the express lane project moves forward, there's some work that maybe our contractor will not have to do. And then there's kind of, in return, there's other portions of the project that we won't have to turn. The biggest thing that the Caltrans is most concerned is they don't want one contractor to install some improvements, and then find that improvement is essentially a throwaway cost, because the next contractor coming in is going to be either demolishing it, or actually taking those improvements out, so.
Thank you very much.
Adam, you got a couple of questions?
Just really a couple of quick questions. Tara, I guess, and I know some of these, you sort of have this, and maybe I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit on this, but you have some sort of TBD dates on things. So I'm just kind of curious, like on Four Corners, if there's sort of any, if I don't hold you guys the timeframe, any ideas of when some of this stuff might be moving forward, like on that, on the pedestrian safety improvements, and on the downtown plan? And I guess to follow up Stephen to yours on the pedestrian safety, this would include any sort of crosswalk improvements that we might look at, because that comes out of the meetings that you've had and TNC?
Okay. So the Four Corners pedestrian improvement, I think as Tara had indicated, Belmont is, because primarily, most of the intersection affected are within Belmont. So City of Belmont has actually taken lead, although, you know, I did sit on the interview panel for that to select the contractor. So I believe it was the last meeting in August is Belmont City Council awarded the contract to the consulting firm. I believe, you know, their Belmont staff is actually kind of controlling the schedule. However, it's my understanding, you know, they want to actually have a little kickoff meeting with the contractor himself, just kind of get the schedule, and really understand what the plan is. And then we also want to convene a meeting with the Four Corners Committee, again, to get, since it's been some time, to get both cities back together, or both, actually, I think there are four agencies back together-
The school districts, you're right.
Right. To really talk about, you know, what the plan is, and what the design's going to look like, and then kind of move that forward, and then kind of get everybody back onto, onto a certain schedule. Unfortunately, that hasn't really happened. Their kickoff meeting hasn't really happened. However, you know, I expect that to happen soon, in which case, then we would have a little bit better handle of, you know, and so instead of having a to be, a to be determined, we could actually put a date or kind of a schedule together.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. Laura?
Thank you, Ron. So-
I don't get my other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, so you said, I apologize. You said, "thank you."
Well, thank you for answering that one. I had two more. I thought I didn't answer yet, so.
Continue, please. Sorry.
The next was the traffic, pedestrian safety improvements. On the timing of that, any kind of update on when you might see that? Would that include sort of the crosswalk improvements potentially that were, might get, that would include that, not just, that would be sort of some of the pedestrian targets for that?
So you're not referring to the San Carlos pedestrian project, you are. So to this evening's time, you actually did approve the-
No, sorry, not San Carlos Avenue for the citywide, not San Carlos Avenue, sorry. The bike and pedestrian plan.
Oh, okay.
I was talking about the timing for that.
So, so the plan itself is we're, you know, we'll be holding the, that kind of a smaller group outreach meeting with the folks. Basically, what that plans to be probably October, or excuse me, September, October timeframe, with the ultimately having, I believe, the committee, the workshop, outreach workshop with the entire community in probably late October, and then ultimately start rolling that out to-
Early, early next year, that we might see something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then downtown, and then I will be-
Good evening, once again. So what the intent is, is we're, the next big milestone would be to release an RFP, to get a consultant on board. So before we do that, and we'd like to do that before the end of this year, but before we do that, it's, we're meeting internally with other departments and divisions to see what their interests are in the downtown. And then we'll be meeting with a council subcommittee to go over the RFP after we've written it, and see if they, if there's buy-in in terms of the scope of the RFP. So that's the intent, is to get something out before the end of the year. We'll probably get consultants to submit something after the holidays and then start. We might be able to move things up, but as you know, there's a lot of concurrent things happening at the same time.
Yeah, and I know you guys have a lot in your place. I'm not trying to rush it. I just was more curious on the timeframe. And I guess for me, it's also sort of as, you know, because I've heard from some businesses sort of further south, sort of what, I forget what we define as a scope for that. Were we looking at sort of Arroyo to San Carlos Avenue, and then Walnut and El Camino, or were we talking about going further south for that?
I think we were talking about, my recollection is all the way from Eaton, so Laurel, from Eaton all the way down to San Carlos Avenue, and maybe even beyond that, and then also the side streets. So it's a very large scope in terms of the projects.
That's what I was hoping here. All right. Thanks, Al.
All right. Thank you. Laura?
Thank you. So, you know, we talked a little bit earlier- So, you know, we talked a little bit earlier, and there's an agenda item also later about childcare facilities. And I know that there's a number of, you know, large employers in the Bay Area that actually have onsite childcare facilities. And it just strikes me, given the development that's happening in San Carlos, it might be worthwhile for us to consider, similar to a, the linkage fee, that we work with developers to spec out space in these large format buildings that are going to be built to accommodate, because I understand that childcare facilities have special requirements that have to go in. So, it's just something to think about as we move forward, to consider that as a potential amenity in these discussions with developers.
Thank you.
And also, just want to compliment staff on the breadth of work. I mean, so this is, I think, the third time that the team has brought back the strategic plan, and I think the progress that has been made this year is phenomenal, and I'm very impressed by that. And thank you for all of the details and answering all the questions so eloquently. It's, we're peppering you with a lot of things, that's very impressive.
Teamwork. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I do have a few. There might be some Tara, some Steve, but first of all, thank all of you for, I mean, every person on the staff who works on this, it's incredible to have this roadmap to accomplish all the things that we throw at you. So, we really appreciate you're just making methodical process, progress on it. So, a couple of things. Steve, I suppose this is probably for you. The agreement with Samtrans to open up that Cherry and El Camino portion of the, I guess it's a Caltrans lot, right, for evening and weekend parking? How will the, how will members of our public know that they can park there and not get, you know, a ticket? Will there be some sort of signage?
So, it's my understanding that there will be signage, that will actually kind of designate certain, I know originally, I believe the original development conditions was supposed to be for the first hundred spaces. And I think Samtrans has designated what those spaces are. You know, what I'd like to do is, rather than have them scattered throughout as they have actually shown, I'd like to kind of cluster them a little bit closer. But there will be some designated sign that said, you know, parking after six is free.
Okay, thank you. And then, you mentioned this community facilities district. So, it's like a regional, it would be a regional fund that businesses would contribute to, and the money would be allocated in various areas of the county where it's needed? Or only those cities have participated?
It's...
I'm just unclear.
It's like an assessment district, so it's just South San Francisco. We got a specific question about it earlier from a council member, and it correlates to some of the work that we're doing. That's why we brought it up and mentioned it.
So, we would potentially create one of our own, you're saying?
Correct. If there's an interest in the council as we get into that, that is another potential tool that the council might want to look at, and so tonight, it was more of a information item.
Yeah, all right. Well, that might be something that we should...
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear, but yeah, so what's, how San Francisco or South San Francisco was really created, they created that essentially a district that's really on kind of the east side of 101. And so, those are the properties that are affected.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you for clarifying that. And then, one item was just sort of, you know, mentioned in passing, was this Britton Avenue widening, and I suspect that, I remember hearing that five, six years ago, it was, in fact, they even had yellow ribbons around some of the redwoods down there. That's the part between Old County and Industrial, is that right?
That's correct.
And you said that's on hold, and is that because there's just various construction projects going on, and we don't know how we're going to need to widen it?
Well, part of that, you know, part of that is, one of the projects on the, what, northeast corner actually had changed, where it's no longer that hotel or hotel. And there's just a lot of different changes within that area that, you know, we wanted to make sure that what we're proposing to do actually is, will function properly or correctly.
Okay, all right. I only have two more. I think you answered my question about the Holly 101 interchange, that, my question was going to be, or even though this project's been delayed now, what, like a year and a half, our cost is, my question was going to be, is our cost fixed? And I think what I heard was that because of these changes and the HOV lanes going in, as a result, I guess, of Measure W, that because there're going to be, there's going to be more contribution that, from a different source, that our cost, our contribution could actually either not go up or possibly go down? Is that correct?
Unfortunately, it probably won't go down. You know, and in fact, what we anticipated, it might go up a little bit more, I think as a result of, you know, some of the changes that we have. Not so much because of expressway construction, but there are some changes as a result of, you know, some environmental issues that we may have to address. There's some additional right-of-way that we kind of have to kind of work around. And so, and it's unfortunate, because there has been delay, I mean, some of it is kind of on us, the city. Because of delay, you know, whenever there is a delay, there's always some increased costs. So, we're still trying to gather what those costs are. However, as a result of what's, we're kind of, because we're coordinating with Caltrans relative to express lane project, you know, that delay, we're trying to kind of put a number on and try to figure out how best we could work with Caltrans, and again, make us whole, so that, you know, the city is not picking up that delay cost.
Yeah. And then, I noticed that it said, I think it said, project advertised, well, it was advertised last month, but you're targeting November, is that to actually let a contract out on it?
Right. What we're hoping to do is, you know, we typically want to advertise as long as possible, so in this case, we're, you know, like to do at least two months. We're hoping to count back to council, probably the second meeting in October, to actually award the contract. You know, by that time, we would know, you know, who the contractor is, or kind of apparent a little better.
Right, okay.
So, yes, we intend to come back, but as a result of the delay, we may have to actually put in the specifications that the contractor can't start until a specific date.
Okay. So, just because it may get all approved in November, that doesn't mean it's going to start in January?
Right. One of the reasons why we have to award is because we have a certain amount of grant funds, and we have to award before the end of this year, 2019, otherwise, we will lose those funds.
Right, okay. So, I'm sure we'll be focusing on that.
Right.
Okay, last question. Since I was on the Four Corners Committee for a long time, as I recall, part of that, I know that the design was for some roundabouts, I assume that the basic design has not changed?
The basic design has not changed, although, I think, you know, we're looking to actually hear from the consultant if they have any additional ideas that, you know, they think could improve, although, the basic design has not changed. So, you know, we anticipate probably having the roundabouts.
As I recall, a component of that was building an interior road inside the tieral into campus that would exit onto Alameda. And one of the concerns was that the school district just doesn't have, you know, the money to contribute to that. Where are we with that? Is that something that, because we might get enough funding, that we could either loan them the money or assume that cost on their behalf? Because it seems to me that, especially with the addition of another school there now, I don't even want to go to that intersection during morning hours on school days. I'm just wanting, I'm just thinking that that is going to be a key, a key component of it.
So, as I mentioned, we went through the selection process, and the school district was actually a part of the, you know, set on the interview board. So, in the process and discussion that we had with the interviews and the consultant itself is, you know, we did talk about having that internal roadway from Alameda. And so, certainly, they had, the school district had some reservations, actually, the superintendent had some reservations. However, they, she also saw the opportunity that it would perhaps improve circulation and drop off, you know, pick-up activity. So, you know, certainly, that is something that I think, you know, I haven't talked to her recently about it, but I think, you know, she, at that time, she was receptive to actually having that. Now, actually, when it comes to paying for it, that is something that we'll have to have additional discussions.
Right, right. I understand. This is a very complex project, as we learned all along the way.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff, by my fellow council members? All right. I think, I think this is something that we do need a motion on, just to approve updates, right?
It was just an update.
Just an update, okay, so we don't need a, says I move to approve.
We do have to approve. I apologize, my bad.
That's okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the updates to the city's strategic plan, work plan items.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any last comments, questions? Okay, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Councilmember McCollins?
Yes. Okay, moving on to 11C, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title 8, Health and Safety, consisting of modifications to chapters 8.50.040 and 8.50.080, traffic impact fee exempting childcare centers serving the public from, yes, centers serving the public from the traffic impact fee. All right, are we getting it?
Mr. Vice Mayor, it's, I'm going to be presenting tonight, Greg Rubin, City Attorney. At the last meeting in August, the council agendized this item for consideration based upon concern that our current traffic fee ordinance did not provide for enough flexibility, and it also may have the effect of inhibiting the building of new childcare centers. When I looked at the code, the child, there was no, the calculation of the childcare fee is set in the code, and so, the simplest way to deal with the issue was to, by my read of the code, was to add an exemption to the existing exemptions covering schools and other public uses, on the theory that childcare was a public benefit. And so, the changes that you're being, you're looking at tonight would eliminate the fee for a childcare center serving the public, and add a definition of that to be childcares that serve the general public, as opposed to a captive childcare center that might be, that is just only available for employees of a business, for example. So, the, some of the background that we found out that was interesting is, when you look at the childcare centers and the way the code calculates the traffic impact fee, it's based on the trips. So, a childcare center generates a lot of trips, and that led to, on a recent applicant, a fee of over $90,000. I did a little bit of math on that, and if you amortize $90,000 in a childcare center that has, serves 25 students, that's $60 per month, per child, and that's over five years. So, I think that I considered that, in reviewing that, in my personal experience and just knowing people, that that's a pretty significant differential in price just related to this traffic impact fee. Now, what you're doing really with this is, you're exempting one use, but you're not affecting the other, the impact fees for other types of businesses. And periodically, we look at this fee, and so, when we look at the fee in the future, we'll have to account for the fact that these types of businesses don't add to our traffic, that we can't collect, we can't not collect from childcare centers and then increase the fee for other uses. It has to be a standalone, in essence, a subsidy for these types of businesses. But, that's a policy decision on your, on your part, that it's an important subject. So, I've generated some findings in the, in the proposed ordinance for you to, that recognize the public purpose and the public good, that having more affordable childcare and more available childcare, excuse me, allows. So, tonight, your, you would be introducing the ordinance, it's the first reading, and I'm available for, to answer any questions you might have about the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you. We do have a speaker card, Sarah Kinnahan, would you like to come on up? Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Kinnahan, and I'm a San Carlos resident, and I'm also here on behalf of Build Up for San Mateo County's Children. This is a county-led initiative that's focused on growing the supply of childcare facilities throughout the county. And Build Up is strongly in favor of exempting childcare centers from these types of fees. Childcare is a very low-margin business, and as Mr. Rubin said, the costs are all passed on to the parents paying the tuition. And at some point, there's a maximum to what parents can afford before they have to start making hard choices about someone not working and not using childcare. So, by waiving the fees, you acknowledge that childcare is really this critical community infrastructure, just like schools are, that we need it in our community. And although there may be trip counts coming to and from the center, childcare located near jobs and housing can actually reduce traffic overall. I can just tell you anecdotally, as a parent in San Carlos, I would have really benefited from more childcare down in that South Laurel area, and I could have walked my child to childcare. Instead, I was part of the traffic nightmare. I would go from White Oaks up to the Wonder Years preschool, that's right next to Carlmont High School, and I'd have to deal with all that morning traffic, and then I'd go down San Carlos Ave and sit in that traffic. So, although there, again, maybe trip counts to the center, ideally, someone is dropping their child off on the way to or from work. So, thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm seeing none. Questions of Mr. Rubin's? I don't, oh, Adam?
I have one quick question, it's almost a question comment. So, I certainly support this ordinance, I think it's great, it's something we've identified as a need, and the community's identified a need. I guess, one question I had, Greg, is it something, is it reasonable to put in, I guess, a sort of five-year sunset, that we can sort of review this again and see sort of where things are and do that? I certainly want to support the ordinance, I would like to just sort of have something like that in there, is that something we could add?
Yeah, yeah, sure, we could...
The council's sort of in support of it, then.
Yeah, we could, at the ordinance, we could put a paragraph, like a new, an additional section that would, after Section 2, that would say that this will sunset by a date that you select, or we could put a provision that says the council will review and potentially change the exemption. I mean, there's, there's different ways to approach that question, but you could certainly add a section, and you could introduce it tonight...
Okay.
...with that change, and then I would bring back for adoption the language incorporating the, any change that you might make in the introduction.
Okay, and then, we could do that tonight, that wouldn't delay necessarily what we're trying to accomplish?
No, yeah, because, yeah...
We'll have to do another reading of it.
We still have to do a second reading, anyway, so that'll be with the final language in it.
So, and I guess for mine, I'd, I guess I'd like the review idea, to say we'd have to review and just look at it after five years, and just put some timeline, so it doesn't necessarily sunset, but we would force a review process, if people are open to that, I think, still...
Just to clarify, so what's the rationale?
I guess I'd like to understand how it's working, you know, is, you know, I know it's sort of, you know, I'd love to get some understanding of the traffic impacts, and maybe see if it's helping, are we getting, you know, are there, is it working, is it doing what it's supposed to do? And so, I don't, so I'd like to just sort of have a forcing function to have us review it after five years, to sort of have that, and not necessarily sunset it, but have a review process in place.
Isn't it true, Greg, that we could review it at any time?
That's true, I mean, you can review it, you can, we can internally calendar it at the staff level to bring it up for a review, or we can incorporate it in the ordinance, if that's the preference. A review doesn't mean that you have to do anything, it just means you're going to review it, and if you decide that you want to change the, or not have an exemption, or have the fee, or whatever the potential options are at the time, you could just instruct us to bring back another ordinance.
Laura, do you have other questions?
Yeah, I just, so I think, again, going back to my previous comments, and to the speaker public, Sarah, her mention about this, you know, the 41% increase in childcare the last few years, it's upwards of about $22,000 per year, so when a family has to make a decision about whether or not somebody works versus not, I think it's very expensive here. It's one of the highest areas in the country, actually, for childcare. So, to that, to that point, like, I'm in favor of moving forward with this, but I just want to clarify that there is established precedent with these types of changes in the past, and I wonder if you could just review for us, once again, I think you talked about at the last meeting, that there's precedent for this type of a change in an ordinance for a specific type of use, is that correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah. This ordinance actually already has some exemptions for public uses... Yeah, this ordinance actually already has some exemptions for public uses. Schools are specifically mentioned, government uses. And the, the way I came up with this change was thinking that, based on the council comments and the prior discussions from the January meeting, that there was definitely a public benefit to creating this additional exemption. There is, we, we've done other exemptions for, for fees in the past, for inspection fees and restaurants and, and other, other uses, not necessarily this impact fee, but other impact fees that we have.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, I, I think it's probably a bit overdue. I mean, we've made a commitment on this council to be responsive to the needs of our community, and this is certainly a huge need in our community. So what's the, what's, is there a general consensus as to whether or not we should put a review in, take it out? Or not, well, it's not take, it's not in there right now, but shall we put it in? Shall we have a review? What's, anybody have any thoughts on that, other than Adam, because he's proposing it?
I mean, I, I think it's always a good practice, right? I mean, I think we're making these changes because we want to increase childcare capacity, and, you know, have we met that goal, yes or no? And if we haven't, are there other things that we can put in place? So I think it's a good step to just do a check-in and see if we're realizing the desired results. So I'm in favor of it.
All right, so, well, Adam, you want to, you want to make the motion since you proposed the change? We'll let you put the extra language in.
Okay, I guess I can try and do that. All right, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1551.
1551, ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, consisting of modifications to chapters 8.50.040 and 8.50.080, traffic impact fee exempting childcare centers serving the public from the traffic impact fee, with a review period after Section 2, is that what you said? After Section 2, after five years of the ordinance being in place.
That's, I, I will add a, a new section, there might, it probably will result in the renumbering of the subsequent sections for the, for the ordinance to come back for adoption.
Great. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Crystal, the roll, please.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item 11D, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing deferral of the collection of the traffic impact fee for new applications for childcare centers that serve the public.
This is sort of a companion measure to your ordinance that you just introduced. There are, there isn't a current application at the city to, to establish a new childcare center, and the plans are in and it's ready to go, except the current ordinance requires that the, before a building permit can be issued, that the $90,000 impact fee be paid. So we are proposing tonight that, that you authorize staff to issue the building permit and then require that the payment be made before the certificate of occupancy is issued. By that time, we would anticipate that the ordinance would be fully in effect, and that the fee would therefore not be required to be paid. But we have to get through that process first, and this is an interim measure to, to expedite the production of this new childcare center.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any speaker cards. Anybody else in the public, anybody from the public like to speak? All right, any comments from anybody? I don't see any lights. I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019 dash...
73.
73, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing deferral of the collection of the traffic impact fee for new applications for childcare centers serving the public.
Okay, we, sorry.
Sorry.
Motion and a second? All right, any further comments or discussion?
I just want to comment that I'm thrilled that we're getting this done. And I think that I completely agree with Sarah that this is a vital piece of our community infrastructure, and I want to thank staff for putting time into this. I know we're trying to tackle a lot of things, but this is a very urgent need, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of quirky that we would change the ordinance and then impose a fee and then take it away, but that's how government works.
Deferring the fee.
Yes, deferring the fee, yes, yeah. I love local government. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Say Powell or, oh, Collins, yes, sorry.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Okay, right. Get the wax cleaned out of my ears. All right, so we're moving on to 12A, council reflections. Anybody have anything that they want to talk about?
One thing I want to say, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, we had the block party yesterday, which I think was, I saw several members of council there, and I just want to, I think it was a great success and heard a lot of great feedback. I talked to some restaurants who said they had record days at the, at the event, and I saw a lot of people having a really good time. I heard from people asking if we could do it more often, so I was really happy that turned out that way. I just want to thank the Public Works Department and the Parks and Rec Department, the City Manager's Office, and the Police Department, and the Fire Department for all the work on making this happen, and the Chamber of Commerce, it was really a fantastic team effort, and really a testament to the staff's ability to, to work together and get things done.
Well, and thank you for, for putting forth that idea, so. We gave you all the credit. That, that way, if anything went wrong, we could say, well, it was Adam's, you know.
They got the blame then, right?
Any other reflections by my fellow council members?
I'd just like to make one quick announcement. The San Carlos Day of Service is coming up on Sunday, September 29th, and the website is up now with lots of great projects for the community to volunteer for and donation opportunities if you're busy that day. So it's sancarlosdayofservice.org.
And that's on Sunday, the 29th?
Sunday, the 29th. And you could sign up online.
That's since we gave up our Fan Appreciation Day tickets. Okay. Laura, anything else?
No.
Okay. Comments by 11, 12B, staff comments on city administrative business?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Great. Well, that brings us to item 13. We are adjourned.